Hi, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon.
Thank you.
We'll talk about the CARES Act equitable distribution recommendations that we are proposing on the county side. So to bring you all up to speed, just as a reminder, on May 19th, you all approved of the acceptance of the CARES Act funds. On June the 1st, the county actually received the funds in our bank account, so we are in possession of the 3.5 million now in Union Bank. And yesterday, we had a small group meeting with a couple of the folks from town to discuss this recommendation in front of you. The premise of our recommendation of how to distribute this CARES Act money is really based on two parts. We give back to the localities, meaning we recruit some of our lost funds to the county and the town local governments, and then the other portion of the money, we give back to our community, to our community businesses. So what we talked about last night was this 50-50 split, where we take 50% of the 3.5 million, and we put it aside for the county and the town to do county and town, local government things with it, and then the other 50% of the money would be jointly managed money that we return to the community, to our local business. The proposal that we talked about last night with the mayor was, we have the EDA and the chamber manage those joint funds, that 50% of the 3.5, to go back to local business to make sure that any particular business either doesn't double dip or doesn't get missed, because the town is only looking at the town business, and we're only looking at the county business, but then somebody tries to cross lines and give money.
And let me interject that I think whoever, whoever manages the money, you could have it set up so that the criteria can be approved by the board and council to say, maybe it's a tiered criteria and all about, but somebody's gonna have to sit down and say, you know, how much, what are the grants for, you know, is it heavier for businesses that are forced to close the entire time? If it's a business that has only closed for four weeks and is about to open up, would that be less, or size? All those questions, somebody would have to put together. Now, I know the town had been working on some of that stuff on their own, with their own local incentive program, so that might be a good starting thing, but what we're doing here has not been trying to figure out what criteria our business would qualify. It was simply to, how would we split the money out, potential uses for that.
Right, in the macro. So what's important for us all to realize is that because the county is in receiving the funds, the county is in 100% legally responsible for the proper use of these funds. So even if the town has their own ideas, it could be a while before we actually make a cash transfer to the town, because they have to show us, they're gonna have to spend money upfront, and then in essence, ask us for reimbursement.
So we're feeing them.
And then once we have the right, in essence, and once, yeah, once we have the right documentation from them, and we've reviewed the documentation, and we're satisfied that it meets the requirements of CARES Act, then we move the money. I mean, that's, you know, that's how we do grants right now. We spend money upfront, I put in everything, and the state looks at it, and it goes, it's good, and then they send us the money.
And you were talking about with respect to the 473,000?
Either the 473 or, and that community money as well, so whatever. Yeah, so right now, the money is sitting in Union Bank, we haven't done anything with it, and we're not gonna do anything with it until this gets settled.
And it's more appropriated.
That's right. Then it gets appropriated, and then it still sits, right, until we get receipts back, and we're satisfied that it's good, then we can start moving, moving money. So the premise with our recommendation was that we all work together, both with the county and the town. They may not want to do that, they just may want to take their part of the money and do with it what they will, right?
But that's not a whole plan.
No, it is, in that as long as it is within the rules of the CARES Act, there's nothing that says, we have to have this joint group to disperse money to the business community. If the town decides, we don't want to talk to the, talk to the county, they can do that, and they can disperse the money in accordance with CARES Act, they could take 100% of the money they get, and give it all to local business, and they not, they not recruit anything to their local government, right?
Right.
So what we try to do here to be equitable, not only between the county and the town, but also between local government and local business. And that's what this is, right here. So I don't think it went well last night, this proposal, so if, and we can re-figure the numbers, but if the, if the town just said, you know, hey, we just want our, our cut, then it would be a certain percentage, either based on population, and there's a couple of models here, because the town residents should buy all rights, there are also county residents. And so by saying a straight percentage population split, which would be roughly three-eighths for the town and five-eighths for the county, that does not account for any of the services that a town vote receive, like fire rescue, parks and recreation, and all those other things, schools, that we provide the town. So when you look at this model here, we used 11 units, if you will, because we took the three units of the town and the five for us.
Eight for us.
Eight for us, and then, you know, that's 11, and that's how we, that's how we came up with this, the 73%, and the 27% for the locality part. You could use this same math, if we just wanted to take that whole 3.5 million and go and slice it, and we give the town 27% of the entire total, we take 73% of the entire total, and now our 73%, we would have to figure out, how much of it do we retain for local government, and how much do we give to business?
And that's our decision.
And that then becomes our decision. It's not a joint decision, if that's, if that's how they decide they would.
The only joint decision part is how they're spending it, because we're still accountable for their money.
And then that's.
Well, we have to approve it.
Well, that's what I mean.
Yes.
We've gotta maintain clarity.
So when you say give them the money, the money still sets in the same account, when the receipts come in, we pay the bill. So we don't, we're not handing them a check for 473,000.
Well, not unless they give us 473,000, that's legitimate receipts, at one time, then we could, then we could do that, that's right.
And by, so we're, if we went with an EDA, chamber decision, then they would decide how the money gets delegated amongst, because one thing that, that we learned in our class last Friday was that you could use this for, and here's the information that we were given, to help with broadband. And that is something that I think we need to look at for long term. Because of COVID, we're working, so many people are now working at home, and especially in my end of the county, that's hard, because the service is just not there. So that is something I think should be on the table to be looked at and considered with this, because it's there, the information's there, it's a need, and a lot of places, I think, may continue working at home, they're not gonna go back to the way it was, so.
And we could get there, but for today, I think what we need to decide is how do we wanna split the money in the macro?
When did I read the split?
And then we come back and we decide how we wanna spend our part of it.
So I did the math, you guys on the total split, out of 3504, 154, if we do the 73-27 split over the whole amount, it's 946 to the town.
Yep.
And.
2.5 to us.
And 2.5 to us. That's, that's what you're, you're suggesting. And how did we come to 27, how did we come to 70-30, basically?
Okay, so when you look at the, the numbers just happen to work out perfectly, right? We have 40,000 plus, we just take 40,000 residents.
So you're using population as your standard?
That's right, because the population is the standard, that's how we got a lot of 3.5, 3.5 population.
Okay, so that's the standard that the government used to distribute the funds to population?
Yes, that's correct.
So it makes sense that we follow the logical, the logical conclusion that we do it the same way.
That's right. So.
It depends on how you define the word equitably. You know, Warren County has agreed to equitably share with the town, and so, you know, you could interpret equitably to be based on population, but then you also have to consider that, you know, I mean, Rick here is gonna save somebody's life if they're in a burning house in the town of Front Royal, and his salary is paid by people who live in the town of Front Royal, as well as people who live in Warren County. So it's however you define equitable, and that is one way to do it.
Okay.
Well, one of the things that say that the town could want 50%, which would be 1,752,000 off.
Right.
That's what they could want, that's an equitable share, and we decide that it's an equitable share. We give it to them, but it's not, it's not, it doesn't equate to the number of people or actually budgets.
I mean, I would, I would say that even, I would dismiss any talk of saying 50% down the middle, because that is in no way equitable to the county, nor is it how the funds were generated in the first place.
Correct.
Right, so, I mean.
I think the foundation, so, I'm a logical person, so I like the logic of dispersing the money based on the logic that it was dispersed to us, because that to me is the fairest way to distribute the funds. So if it was based on population, then that is what we should continue to follow. We didn't set that standard. That standard was set by somebody else who decided to give us 3.5 million dollars for COVID relief, right?
If I may say though, the premise of that though is, when you, when you read all the CARES Act.
Which I haven't done yet.
So the city of Fairfax, right, because they are over 500,000, the city of Fairfax got their own straight cut of CARES Act, but they are also very self-sufficient, they have their own schools, they have their own park.
Right, they fund everything, yeah.
So when you get to a locality in all of these counties that have these smaller towns, it's not just a straight population, because those smaller towns are dependent upon the county for many things that they don't have to pay for.
Okay.
So back to Jason's point of, this is where in the language of the CARES Act, we have to determine an equitable distribution, which is not necessarily.
Not population based on.
A 100% population, 15,000 out of 40,000, 25,000 out of 40,000.
Okay.
That's how we came up with these numbers here, so that we counted a town resident as also being a county resident, because they're benefiting from both services of the county and the town. So somewhere between the pure population split and somewhere between this right here, you could negotiate, if you will, but at the end of the day, it's up to the county to determine that split. We're just trying to be nice and.
And at the end of the day, we're all the benefit of something we didn't have, and it didn't come, well, yes, it's taxpayers' money coming back.
I was gonna say, we're paying for it, we're just not.
We don't pay today. But at least, you know.
Children's children's.
Family. Our kids are gonna be paying for this big boy.
Absolutely, pretty much, here's the gun. So, I mean, to fight over it at this point, you've done it the way it makes sense.
Well, the county's not fighting it, and the decision just has to be made between the county and the town.
Right.
That's what it amounts to, and what we're trying to do now is just the split. We'll work, we'll work out the detail, what happened.
Okay, I thought that was all part and parcel of what we were doing, so.
No.
So what were the objections? You said it didn't go well, what were the objections? I'd like to understand more.
Just there's, they want more money.
Okay.
Simple as that, they don't agree with the way that.
The equitable solution we've come, we've come to, okay.
So go over it again, please, on localities, I guess your proposal is 50-50, you take a half of the 3.5, then the county gets 73, the town gets 27, and that's meant to go towards reimbursement from services.
Government expenses, that's right.
Or things like broadband expansion, whatever, it has to be split now and end of December, and that's the hot one.
Okay, so the community, you got 50-50, you got 1.75 million. And I assume that that could be more spent in town.
That, it could.
That's what I'm saying.
So logically, if the town thought about it, town business might actually benefit better from this model, because when the EDA and the chamber get together, they may come back and recommend that, most of our businesses are town anyway, so they may actually get more money for town business in a, in a joint pot, other than saying, just give me my little slice and I'll deal with it, right?
But they could also say, I don't wanna have anything to do with you yet, I wanna disperse my own funds.
They could, they could say that, that's right.
Well, considering our old wealthy with the EDA, I would say that's a high possibility, because you're not gonna involve yourself with someone in which you are in a lawsuit.
Yeah, I thought.
That's illogical.
I thought the town was gonna use the chamber.
Not getting along with. No, no, no.
Time to channel, I knew the town was gonna use the chamber, we can't even use the EDA.
That is a possibility.
So I mean, if that was the case, they wouldn't have to use the EDA. And I would see them being both bodies, once the criteria is made up, they can start accepting applications, they would be the first line of defense, and they would say, okay, this looks good, and let's go. My biggest concern though is with the town, and it could add in the county, is that we make sure that that money is spent within the confines of the rules of the CARES Act. Otherwise, we have to.
That's right, that's why it comes back up here.
Right.
I look at it, Jason looks at it, and I'll look at it, and we go, yep.
The only issue with that is, I really don't think it's good for the community to say, have the chamber doing one round of grants and the EDA, and so one business might be grants from both, one, only one of the other. It could, all the county, the checks could actually come from the county, but you could have a board that's kind of both organizations that collaboratively work on the applications and sort through them. You know, the EDA is already a loan committee.
It would save some energy, it would, you're doing the same thing twice.
Well, we do a lot of that.
I know, but we don't. But we don't need to.
No, we don't. And the EDA, and then you have one board that they both bring to, that would put it down, and that board could see if there was any.
And that's what we're talking about doing there.
Right.
And they gotta be willing to do that, and if they're not, then we gotta figure out another way to act forward. But they still, everything, it still has to meet the criteria.
Right.
And somebody's gotta ultimately approve it.
That would be that board, that's the second layer back.
Yeah.
So do we have a list of criteria, or?
It's in your old sheet.
Right, it's in there?
Yeah.
Okay. So the criteria has to meet, I know what some of it is, it's childcare, it's, it's, yeah, it has to do with.
Law.
Right.
Homelessness, business interruption.
Right.
Can I make a suggestion?
Please.
You know, there's the town suing the EDA, and all of that bad feeling with bad blood, one of, and you can do it any way you want to, I mean, the county board could be the entity that, you know, processes all this, but that would be a little nuts, frankly, you all have other things to do. You know, you might consider forming some joint committee with the town, where the county appoints X number of board members, I'd suggest that Doug, Greg be on it at the least, and, you know, possibly one of you, maybe not, possibly a town council, maybe not member, and then if you had one joint committee to determine who's gonna get the money in terms of the community portion, the business portion, then we'd get away from what, you know, Mr. Stanley's talking about, of the confusion caused by, you know, in-town businesses versus out-of-town businesses, and we really don't wanna draw that distinction.
No, I don't think, I agree. I agree, because we're, we're creating a division, and we, that is not what we want to do.
That's not what we wanted to.
No.
But if you read, if you read the top portion of this, we're basically saying that there needs to be a board put together that's joint, that helps make these criterias work for everybody.
Right.
So that, then, if it works and it comes back to Mr. Farrell, Mr. Ham, myself, you, whoever's on, you know, making those decisions, then we run them a check, because they did everything that they were supposed to do.
Right.
And, you know, and I think the safest, sorry, but.
Yes, no worries.
Way to do that would be, you know, so let's say that there was no pan, and it was just y'all. I would still recommend, form a committee, and then have that committee make decisions, and go put make recommendations, and bring it back to you, because this county can get, you know, has agreed that state intercept applies, and the money's spent wrong, taxpayers in Warren County have to pay it back through Warren County. So the committee is to make a recommendation to the board, and then the board is gonna, you know, not, the goal being not mental politically, but instead mental practically, you know, Rick and I, and perhaps Doug, and perhaps others, and Caitlin will be looking at things, hey, you know, is this legal, are we gonna get in trouble? We'd also be looking at what other localities are doing. I expect additional state guidance from this, and, you know, that would be one way to do it, and then ultimately, so that the joint, if there was a committee, a joint town, county committee would make some recommendations as to, okay, we recommend that, you know, it could be a function of, however much business tax or real estate tax you pay, twice as much business taxes as you pay the license tax, or however many employees you employ plus sole proprietorship, I mean, any different ways to do this, try and figure out who's lost money and who's been impacted by COVID-19, and you're never gonna come up with a way that's gonna be viewed as universally fair, but they would come up with that, that's gonna be a lot of work.
It is a lot. It's a short amount of time to do it, yeah.
And then this board's function and our function.
It's actually shorter than you think.
Yeah.
Because if we're doing it right, and we've gotta disperse the money by tax, and we've gotta be through with this thing by the end of December, we really gotta have everything spent by the end of September.
Absolutely.
Or, I'm pretty close to it.
You know, every day, businesses are dying, as you pointed out, you know, this is gonna, or you pointed out, this is gonna cause closure of my industry. So the pressure's on, and, but again, I would like this board to have the ultimate authority as to what to do, because this board has the ultimate responsibility to pay it back if it's spent wrong.
That's correct.
But I don't think y'all have the time to go through all this without having other people do it.
What if we did, and I thought, I thought about this last thing, but as far as the committee makeup, and there again, we want to decide it today, here's a thought, kind of what you're saying too, but I would say, Mr. Farrell, and I would, I would take both the town and county's finance directors, and then maybe the town with a point one, we can point one, I don't know if we'd necessarily be a member of this board, and then the other two, we made up of a member from business community outside of town limits, and one who's, has a business in town limits. So that would give us a, a, a committee of seven, and they would be like the overseen.
I would recommend a committee of five, you're asking for stuff to happen fast.
Yep.
I think that five, that's a smaller number, I think you've got great ideas, it's just harder, or maybe you wanna write those down, and, I mean, I could write them down right now, or, I just recommend smaller boards if you're trying to act quickly.
That's fine.
Well, and again, I think that board can make certain recommendations, as far as who's meeting out and reviewing, again, you had, whether it's the EDA, the chamber, like the EDA has this loan committee already set up and criteria and stuff, and it's, you know, if you try to not reinvent the wheel completely, who wants to vet the tax returns for the last two years and go through all that minutia detail? Do you wanna let that committee do that, make recommendations to this overarching committee?
You wanna do that, that's a, that's a logical thought, but town's gotta decide if they're willing to let that out.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah.
So I mean, there's, there's, we're deciding on the 50% split, now we've gotta, and then next, we gotta decide on how it's gonna be split up, who's gonna be helping to control it, who's gonna be members of the board, and there, I mean, there's still lots of questions that we have to ask and answer very quickly.
Something to think too, then go down to the five.
Yeah.
Get rid of the, and it's almost duplication, don't have somebody necessarily appointed by the town or the county, the town or the county appoint a business person to that committee, so they can give you the five right there. And I think it'd be important to have members from the business community kinda help oversee this process too, because they're gonna know other businesses that are gonna be in help, need help in those things, so, again, it doesn't have to be decided.
But from that business owner's perspective though, if there are business owners wanting the money, and they're gonna be on the committee, that's a little.
A conflict of interest.
I mean, you're gonna need a retired business, I mean, I, you know, the, I might suggest that, just from the eight, from the speed perspective of a five-member board, three appointed by the town and two by the town, again, from a speed perspective, you could have a bigger board that might be more, you know, fair is the wrong word, I think.
Yeah.
But, you know, the speed thing is important here.
Right, it's obvious, we, we have to be expeditious in this, because if we don't, we're gonna find ourselves having to give it back.
Yeah, the good thing is, we have the funds.
Right.
They're already sitting in the bank, now we just gotta be able to disperse them according to the way that the town and the county will live with, and have clarity on to make sure that there's, it's spent the right way.
Well, we are already, June 16th, we're decision, correct?
Yeah.
We have time taken.
Clock is taken.
So we don't, as far as not agreeing.
And you gotta, not only, not only do we have to sell our board, they've gotta sell their council, and.
So this, no, if this board is the ultimate authority, then this board is the ultimate authority, we get to make the decision, how it's distributed, their board just has to make decisions about how they wanna do their.
Do their own decision, correct?
With one.
I'm kinda confused.
Yeah, yeah, mostly correct, you know, they, they went to Richmond and got special legislation to form as a second EDA.
Correct.
And so if we take a position with respect to what equitably share means that they disagree with, they might go to Richmond and try and seek some legislative action, or interpretation, or attorney general's opinion, or court, who knows, court action, whatever. But, yeah, I mean, I think that the, the term equitably was deliberately fuzzily chosen in here, because if you think, let's think about it from another perspective, let's say that Front Royal was disproportionately and massively hit by this, and that they had a public hospital overwhelmed, and they've already spent $10 million, might be equitable that they get all of them.
Right.
I mean, I think deliberately the word equitable was, was.
Was you.
I feel that if you have any system that is fair, and I think this absolutely qualifies that, I agree that it meets the term equitable. The town will probably argue, no, equitable means based on population, that's how you were paid, so we should get 1.3 million. I think when you view the distinction between, you know, then that might be true, if it was Warren County and the city of Front Royal, and the city of Front Royal had to have their own emergency management director, it had to have their own school superintendent, their own school system, and all that other kind of stuff, but it's different, because a town resident is a county resident. So this is equitable, but, you know, you don't have total control, because you have agreed in writing to provide an equitable share from the town, and then the question is, you just have to have a defensible equitable share. This is a defensible equitable share, it's a recommendation from your staff, you don't have to accept it, but this is one possibility.
Now, in, in all of this, just so you're aware, this 73-27, that's if we count us as eight shareholders in the town, there's three shareholders, if we did it with the straight population split, you're only talking $200,000 difference.
Right, because it's not that much.
So we're, it's not that much, so we're now arguing over 200,000 in this month.
Which is a, I mean.
One night, it's not even 200.
Or you're conceivably arguing about the 50% advantage.
That's right.
Correct.
The, I mean, the other way we could go with this is just go, here's your 27% or 30%, whatever it is, you deal with it, and now they do what they want with local government and their businesses, and they really don't talk to us. Now, they still have to get our approval, right, or we have to approve it and make sure that it meets the CARES Act. We don't necessarily approve what they're spending the money on, as long as it meets the legal criteria, right?
So they say to that option, was that not, they didn't want that either?
They want.
Autonomy.
They, they, it sounds like to me that they want some autonomy.
Yep.
It sounds like to me that they, they aren't agreeable to how much they, they meaning the town gets, so they're gonna fight that. And if they, if, like you said, if they go to the state, if they go, I mean, if they do all of the things that it's, you're wasting, and.
Well, I don't think that's gonna provide any remedy.
Right, but we're also.
Not quickly, it would be, it's gonna be, I mean, the clock's gonna run out, we're talking about.
Yeah, you're talking about the time that we need. We're willing to do this now.
Right, and we need to.
And we need to do this now to help the people. We're helping people.
How much is the state gonna look at them and say, spoiled child, go home, be grateful?
Well, that's, that's up to them, but that, it may take them till December to do that.
Do that, because they know they'll get it back.
There also, again, could be additional state or federal guidance from this, because this, you know, Miler, Placenta County got six incorporated towns to New York, and this is playing out statewide, I mean, they couldn't be an attorney general.
Do you know what they're doing yet? Have they indicated how they're.
Yeah, how are they doing it? How is Shinnito?
Haven't decided, but, you know.
I don't know, I'm the same problem for you.
Because Frederick County's gonna have the same issues with the city, yeah, the exam.
Someone has probably already written to the attorney general asking for an interpretation that equitable means based on population, I suspect that that's already been.
So might. So I'm just going to suggest, I think that you can argue with based on population. If there's only a $200,000 delta, I say we go with the population distribution and be done with it. That's my opinion.
And it's all going through the same.
Exactly. The population. So I have no.
Yeah, there is, there is some interpretation of what.
200, he says, Rick says it's about a $200,000. So that's been 946.
In this model.
It's 946.
In this model, the, no, the 946 is that we just give them their whole 27%.
Okay.
Right. And that includes locality spending and business spending.
Right. So if we get totally by population, that gives them the one, what did you say, 1.1?
Total by population gives them 1.3 and 2.2 to us.
Okay.
You know, by total population, but that, again, that equitably does not account for the things that they benefit from the county, right? It's treating them as if they're on their own.
So if you do that, they help businesses in town, we help businesses out in town. If, if you're doing that split now. I think I heard you. You're not restricted to. I understand, but if you're, if you're trying to do that.
That's what I believe per population.
Right.
But, you know, if you, if you look at the numbers of 1,500 plus or minus active businesses or office businesses in the town and the county. And then actually there's, this is just 1,500 and change out in the town and the county though.
And you do it.
The town has 1,200 of those.
This is out of eight.
They get a smaller percentage when they start to unitize?
Or we, or we, yeah, they get a smaller percentage.
You have that.
You're wrong.
Yeah. Could you, could you come out and talk to your warriors? That would be awesome, right?
Oh, this is, there's a, there's a lot to.
There's, it's a lot to digest.
That's why we haven't had so much.
So we'll be back home next week. We're going, I'll be meeting with the town between now and next week.
Yeah.
Can we, can we add this to our, our next week's work session too? So that we can finalize what we're thinking?
I'm fine with that if it is, because I think you need to digest it.
Yeah.
We need to make the decision and we also need to continue to talk with the, with the town.
So I guess I, what I would ask you to think through is how do you want to split the money at the macro level?